Good evening, welcome to the Monday, July 8th, 2024 Board Meeting of the Chapakua Central School District Board of Education. Um, the Board went into executive session at 5:30 and came out at 6:30 to have a mandatory meeting with our auditor that had a pre-audit meeting. Um, so we have now wrapped back up and we...
Can you hold your microphone?
I don't know. And we, can I have, so we're out of executive session, but we... Right, we don't have to be over there. Okay, so please stand in the hood.
To the flag, and to the Republic which is sanctum, one nation, under God, indivisible, et cetera.
So tonight is our annual reorganization meeting. Um, I'll turn it over to Lisa.
The first order of business is to swear in our newly re-elected, uh, Board Member Number 1.
Yes.
Stand.
Okay. Rewind?
All right. Can I have a motion to reconvene the public meeting at 7:03?
I'm a...
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Okay. So, wait, I'm reading the first one, the board member one?
The board member one.
Okay. I Kaylee Huang do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Board Member of the Chapakua Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Christine?
I Christine Ackerman do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Superintendent of Chapakua Central District according to the best of my ability.
Seven.
Okay, so then we go... It is good. Yes. So, may I have a motion for Board of Education President?
I move that Ryan Kelsey be elected President of the Board of Education of Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year.
I second that motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. May I have a motion for Board of Education Vice President?
I move that Kaylee Huang be appointed to serve as Vice President of the Board of Education of Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year. She shall have the power to exercise the duties of the President in case of absence or disability of the President. In the absence of both the President and Vice President, Alyssa Dorfman is authorized to act in the capacity of President.
I second the motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we play musical chairs.
Ryan and Kaylee, you need to read your oath somewhere.
Okay.
Let's start one at a time.
All right. I Ryan Kelsey do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of President, Board of Education of the Chapakua Central School District according to the best of my ability.
I Kaylee Huang do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Vice President, Board of Education of the Chapakua Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Okay, over to me for C.
Okay, uh, may I have a motion for School District Clerk?
I move that Lisa Elsner be appointed School District Clerk of the Chapakua Central School District for the 24-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries.
I Lisa Elsner do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of District Clerk of the Chapakua Central School District according to the best of my ability.
May I have a motion for School District Clerk Pro Temp?
I move that Dr. Christine Ackerman and Laura Moreno be appointed School District Clerk Pro Temp of the Chapakua Central School District in the absence of a School District Clerk during the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for School District Treasurer?
I move that Kathleen Lynch be appointed School District Treasurer of Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for School District Deputy Treasurer?
I move that Josh Colwell Block be appointed School District Deputy Treasurer of the Chapakua Central School District for its 2024-2025 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for Central Treasurer Extracurricular Activity Fund?
I move that Kathleen Lynch be appointed Central Treasurer Extracurricular Activity Fund of Chapakua Central School District for the 24-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for Attendance Officers?
I move that building administrators or the designees shall be appointed Attendance Officers of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Asbestos Management Plan Designee?
I move that Mario Martinez be appointed Asbestos Management Plan Designee of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Claims Auditor?
I move that Jonathan Ross be appointed Claims Auditor of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-2025 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Chief Emergency Officer and Co-Chief Emergency Officer?
I move Mario Martinez be appointed Chief Emergency Officer and Josh Colwell Block be appointed Co-Chief Emergency Officer of the Chapakua Central School District for the 24-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for 504 Compliance Officers, Title II ADA Compliance Officers?
I move that Andrew Corsilia and Jamie Edelman be appointed 504 Title II ADA Compliance Officers of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Student Disability Discrimination Compliance Coordinators?
I move that Andrew Corsilia and Jamie Edelman be appointed Student Disability Discrimination Compliance Coordinators of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion to appoint members to the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education?
I move that the individuals listed on the attached memo from Jamie Edelman and Karen Smith be appointed to the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-2025 school year.
I second the motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion to appoint McKinny Vento Homeless Liaisons?
I move that Karen Smith and Jamie Edelman be appointed McKinny Vento Homeless Liaisons of the Chapakua Central School District for the 24-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion to appoint the rotational list of impartial hearing officers as determined by the New York State Department of Education for the 24-25 school year?
I move that the rotational list of impartial hearing officers as determined by New York State Department of Education be appointed for the 2024-25 school year. The lists shall also include the names of other certified impartial hearing officers requesting to serve in Chapakua Central School District. Impartial hearing officers shall be selected, appointed, and compensated in accordance with Policy 3030.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Medicaid Compliance Officers?
I move that Andrew Corsilia and Jamie Edelman be appointed Medicaid Compliance Officers of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Payroll Certification Officers?
I move that Josh Colwell Block and Andrew Corsilia be appointed Payroll Certification Officers of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Property Control Manager?
I move that Josh Colwell Block be appointed Property Control Manager of Chapakua Central School District for the 24-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Purchasing Agent?
I move that Ann Holmquist be appointed Purchasing Agent of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Records Management and Access Officer?
I move that Josh Colwell Block be appointed Records Management and Access Officer of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Appointment of School District Attorney?
I move that the firm of Shaw, Pearlson, May &amp; Lambert LLP be appointed School District Attorney of the Chapakua Central School District for the 25-24-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Appointment of School District Independent Auditor?
I move that the firm of PKF O'Connor Davis LLP be appointed as School District Independent Auditors of the Chapakua Central School District for the 24-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Community Members of the Audit Committee?
I move to appoint Matthew White and Fred Wang as Community Members of the Audit Committee of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. May I have a motion for Appointment of School District Bond Counsel?
I move that the firm of Hawkins, Dellafield, and Wood LLP be appointed as School District Bond Counsel of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Appointment of School District Fiscal Advisor?
I move that the firm of Bernard P. Donigan Incorporated be appointed as School District Fiscal Advisor of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for District Title IX Coordinators?
I move that Sandra Seppi, Jeff Curtis, Lauren Lynn Stewart, Deborah Osbach, Tanya Wilson, and Alyssa Stover be appointed District Title IX Coordinators of the Chapakua Central School District for the 24-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for District Title IX Investigators?
I move that Josh Colwell Block and Jamie Edelman be appointed District Title IX Investigators of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for District Title IX Decision Maker?
I move that Andrew Corsilia be appointed District Title IX Decision Maker of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Title VI and Title VII Compliance Officers?
I move that Andrew Corsilia and Jamie Edelman be appointed Title VI and Title VII Compliance Officers of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for DASA Coordinators?
I move that Andrew Corsilia, Jamie Edelman, Sandra Seppi, Karime Soto, Ronald Gama, Christina Mauricio, Joseph Sullivan, Jeff Curtis, Lauren Lynn Stewart, Jessica Rappaport, Deborah Osbach, Ryan Spillane, Tanya Wilson, Nadia Buffa, Alyssa Stover, and Jennifer Keen Thompson be appointed DASA Coordinators of the Chapakua Central School District for the 24-25 school year.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Depositories?
I move that JP Morgan Chase, New York Class, New York LAF, and TD Bank be designated as depositories for the funds of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year, beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Investments?
I move that Kathleen Lynch Treasurer and Josh Colwell Block Deputy Treasurer be authorized to take appropriate action in the investment of Chapakua Central School District funds during the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for Newspapers?
I move that for the purpose of advertising bids and other legal notices of the Chapakua Central School District during the 2024-25 school year, the Journal News, as the newspaper of record, The Examiner, and the New York Times be designated.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Petty Cash?
I move that Petty Cash accounts in accordance with policy be approved for the 24-25 school year as follows. Petty Cash, Superintendent's Office, $100. Douglas G. Grafflin Elementary School, $100. Roaring Brook Elementary School, $100. West Orchard Elementary School, $100. Horace Gurley High School, $100. Robert E. Bell Middle School, $100. Seven Bridges Middle School, $100.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for Treasurer's Bond?
I move that the treasurer's bond in the amount of $100,000, as executed by NYSir, be approved as to form and sufficiency for the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Data Protection Officer?
I move to appoint Andrew Taylor as Data Protection Officer of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Internal Auditor?
I move to appoint Norwaki Smith LLP as Internal Auditor of the Chapakua Central School District for the 2024-25 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. All right, um, it's time for the President's Report. It's been a very long day.
[laughing]
Uh, so I have just a couple of things I wanted to say real quick, and we'll save more thought for another day. Um, I hope everybody had a festive Fourth of July. At this time of year, the Board's been participating in the annual Administrator's Retreat today, and it's going to continue tomorrow. It's time for renewal, some new learning, and making plans for the upcoming year, and for me, it's just a reminder that while our faculty are enjoying a well-deserved break from inspiring our kids, our central district staff and building leaders never really stop working, and so just wanted to take a minute to express my appreciation for their dedication and energy and the planning that went into the retreat today and that will take place tomorrow, so thank you guys. And my hope is for the upcoming year, um, well, actually, before I say that, I also want to thank my fellow Board members in advance for all the time and attention that are required for the upcoming year and the inevitable mistakes I will make as my first-time Board President, and I hope that you all help me to course correct as needed, so, uh, just, and a special shout-out to Hillary for leading us so well last year, so thank you, Hillary. Well-deserved break down on the end now.
[laughing]
Uh, in general, my hope is that in the upcoming year, we can put some focused attention on finding regular opportunities to express our gratitude and appreciation like I just did now for each other, for our district faculty and staff, families, students, community members, and so on. We're fortunate to have many advantages here in Chapakua. Our graduates grow into happy, purposeful adults, go on to do amazing things, and, you know, we continue to attract great talent. Our families are very engaged. I could go on and on. So despite what might be happening in the world around us now or going forward, my hope is in the coming year, we can keep our eyes focused on what our school district can control, support what's best for our students, continue to improve wherever we see opportunities for growth, while also acknowledging just how good we have it here and that we're all on the same team. So with that, I look forward to the upcoming year, and I hope that, uh, everybody has a great rest of their summer. With that, I think we have two resolutions we need to do before, is that right or no?
We need to do the...
Right. Okay, so we're going to do a couple of resolutions next, and then we'll turn it over to Dr. Ackerman. So, I just have to find that spot. So, I, hold on. We need to do 5.1.1, which are the Board Committee and Liaison Assignments. Do we do that by just a calling, a motion to, okay, so can I have a motion to accept the Board Committee and Liaison Assignments that we've come up with for the year?
I move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And then I also need a motion to accept the 2024-25 Board of Education meeting schedule.
I move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, Dr. Ackerman, you're up.
Thank you, Ryan, and congratulations on accepting the presidency, so looking forward to working with you in that capacity. Great. Okay, so Adam and I just wanted to highlight some of the work that's happening here in the district, and then some other agenda items for the Board's consideration this evening, so we're going to talk about first, we received a report from our literacy consultants who presented at the last meeting, so I just want Adam to share a little bit about where that report is, sort of our parents want to review it, and then what our next steps are since we received it.
Thank you. So this morning, we shared that report with our faculty and staff in all of our buildings, um, and then later today, we posted it in two places on our website. We posted it on the main page, and then we also posted it on the curriculum page under the literacy page, so it's in two places for our community to see it. We posted both the full report, um, which is at just over 70 pages, as well as the executive summary. Um, we've also, um, have a fellowship for your consideration. You'll see that as 8.13, so a big part of that report was to put together a team. We do have our Science of Reading Task Force, but we'd like to formalize that further. That's in the, in the form of a learning team right now, like an in-service class, um, but we'd like to formalize that a little bit more as a, as a fellowship. We'll have faculty members apply to that fellowship using a process that we use for fellowships, and so we have a SMOA in there with the CCT. They've shown their support, and we're hoping you will too, and then that team will go through those recommendations and start to review programs, et cetera. We, we're going to make sure that we align all of our summer PD with state ed briefs and also that report, um, with program agnostic, things that are supported both by the, um, state ed department as well as the, um, our consultants with regard to the Science of Reading, and then the last thing is our PD plan for 24-25. We're in the process of making some revisions to that to make sure that we're aligned with the report that we got and also the state ed briefs that they've published.
And then on the calendar that the Board just approved this evening, we have an update planned for October 23rd, so that will give us enough time to put our, um, fellowship in place and then begin some of the work, because one of the first steps in the recommended actions from the consultants is that we come up with our own literacy philosophy, so I know that it's important at the last meeting that this, we know that this is going to be a process, but there has to be targets and there has to be a pace to it that's reasonable, so that is what our plan is moving forward. And then I also, Adam and his students have been working on our launching the pre-K program, so I'd just like Adam to talk a little bit about that. We have a lot of families that are interested, which is great.
Yeah, so we did conduct a webinar, myself as well as the Director from Healthy Kids, and that's recorded, and it's on our pre-K, um, web, web page that we've created, which is also under curriculum. Um, that informational webinar is there, the slide deck is there. If folks don't want to watch the webinar, they just want to click through the slide deck. It's got a lot of helpful information. I was contacted by some parents thanking us for all of that information in there. If anybody has any further questions, they should certainly, um, contact me. The registration deadline is July 26th. Um, that families need to let us know that they're interested, and then we're going to have a lottery on July 31st. We have, right now, we have 122 children that are interested, so, um, but it's, it's quite a few. It's, you know, in demand. And then I did want to note that, um, we had used quite a few mentor, um, documents and texts, and everybody in the region was using this December 1st cutoff, and the law, um, 3602E says that you need to use December 1st, but there is a follow-up part that says "or students who will otherwise be first eligible to enter public school," et cetera, um, and so we can use that. We're going to make an adjustment to our December 1st cutoff and align it to our kindergarten cutoff. We originally thought we weren't allowed to do that because that, um, date was explicit in the law, but there is that caveat to it, so we're going to make that adjustment. We've already updated it on our website, and we're going to send out more information to the community tomorrow so they know that we've made an adjustment to that date, because there were some students that wouldn't potentially qualify that now will qualify, so, um, we'll make sure we communicate that widely.
We also wanted to mention that we have a contract in place for Ellen Doherty on the agenda. She's been working with the district since 2020. She was an Assistant Superintendent here, and then she had moved into, uh, an executive coaching position for administrator and administrators and a support, uh, position for our DEI faculty and staff, as was recommended through the inside equity audit, and so her work is focusing on supporting our administrative team and identifying areas for growth and providing professional and emotional support as they navigate through their positions, and we have, it's an optional, um, opportunity for our staff. We do have a, a number of administrators that take advantage of this. I know when I was a, a principal, it was very helpful for me to have a, an administrative coach that wasn't affiliated with the district to bounce off ideas in different situations with, and also, um, Ellen has been really helpful for us as we've navigated some really difficult, uh, issues throughout our, our time here, because she does also have, in addition to being a, um, a well-established administrator, both as a secondary principal and as a special education director, she's a social worker by trade, and some of the issues that our administrative teams have had to lead our faculty through have been really challenging, so, um, her contract is on the agenda again for removal consideration, as is her work with our DEI faculty, because we felt that collectively as a school district and Board that retention is really important, and this is one of the ways that it was identified that we could continue to support and retain our staff by providing this extra layer of professional, um, development. And then I just wanted Adam to go through some of what we're working on this summer with our faculty.
So, I'll just, yeah, here we go. So, so, um, I did mention literacy, um, I did want to highlight a few things. This isn't an exhaustive list, but, um, it kind of gets me excited to share some of the things that are happening over the summer. We, we basically have faculty members, professional developers, counselors here, um, almost the entire summer engaged in curriculum writing and professional learning. Um, with literacy, we're doing some morphology work about, um, grammar, Latin roots, things like that in grades three through six. Phonics first work, handwriting without tiers, curriculum alignment in seven through 12, as well as some elective development in grade 11 in English at Greeley. Um, in math, it's really, there's not a lot of curriculum changes, but we're focusing on research-based instructional practices in grades six through eight, um, some updates to geometry, um, and then New York State just published their Computer Science Fluency Standards, so we're making some adjustments to our computer science, um, kind of scope and sequence as the students move through from the elementary all the way through to the high school. Um, science, the, the action is happening in eighth and ninth grade, as you expect, um, some reworking of biology. That course name is changing. It was living, it was biology, then living environment, now it's going back to biology. The curriculum's changed a little bit. Um, ninth grade electives are still under development. We continue to work on those. We're offering Science 8 at Bell, um, so we continue to work on that curriculum as well as some science research. Um, social studies, Global 910, you're aware of that. We spoke about that earlier in the school year. Um, we're also doing some work with Teachers K-12 on the election 2024 and how to approach[1607.62] K-12 on the election 2024 and how to approach the election when it comes to teaching students about that. Life School, the main update is our teachers are preparing to make a shift towards international baccalaureate. It takes an additional year. There's a year of training and curriculum work that's done, and then that's implemented in the following year. Languages, the work is around elementary school. So that what that, that's part of our strategic plan. So what shifts we'll make in the middle school and also what program we want to implement in the elementary school to introduce students to world language. STEAM, you can see the list there. You got a little bit of a dose of that as we visited Apple today. We also have a coding camp, some work on artificial intelligence and STEAM curriculum. And we sent a couple of teachers, Zach Arnold and Mike DeBellas, out west to do some work on the electric car. They actually were able to attend an adult camp on how to build that electric car and teach students to do the same. So that was a grant from the CSF. So you'll see that rolling in here in the fall. And then we have some work as well on sensible belonging. We have a, some course development and also an in-service course that we're running that you can see there.
Can I just, I just got some messages saying that people can't hear the audio. It's really bad, that people are having a hard time understanding what we're saying.
Okay, we'll make sure we speak into the microphone. David, is everything working?
Thank you.
All right. And so then I just wanted to highlight a few dates. I mean, we're in the middle of the summer, but we are still working. And so if people need any kind of support, we're here on Monday through Thursday. But we also have one of our programs running on Friday. So you certainly reach out to us. And just in terms of where we are in the schedule, the 29th is when we really start to get moving again, and we start registering our athletes. We've got a meeting on the 7th for the board. And then on the 12th, we start registering our modified athletes. And then on the 21st is really our first meeting before we start all sports, where we welcome our new families in grades one through 12 to the district. And that is the end of the superintendent's report.
Are we allowed to ask any questions about some of the slides?
Christine, if we want to ask a few questions, yes.
Yes. The life, can we go back to the, what Adam presented? The slide with, so the life school, US history, math, IB, CP, like, so is the life school evolving and changing again? Or so we're changing it from what has historically been life school?
Yeah. So we've, we've had a few iterations of life school. We have almost an entirely new staff that's either come on board this year or next year, not new to Greeley, but new to the life school. And so we did some work with the high school administration, myself, and some of our professional developers, where we kind of revisioned what, like the new vision of the life school and did some work around that. And so they've got some curriculum development work that they're working on, as well as the shift to the international baccalaureate program, which the teachers are being trained on now.
So is there, I don't know if I missed it, are there any communications with the community on the different changes that's going to be happening with the life school? Because I know that families were interested in life school, and if it's changing, they need to understand what the changes are, why the changes were made, and how will this improve their life school experience and decide if they want to continue or apply, you know, I don't know, I don't have any experience with life school. But I'm wondering if there's any communication with the community about the change because life school has been such a big part of our district. So just understanding the differences and the changes that we are proposing to make, or maybe we made already.
Yeah, I understand as part of the application process that there's a pretty extensive, like, campaign around what is life school, who's, you know, who would potentially be a good fit for life school, what would students expect, you know, parents are involved in that process. So these, these things will continue to be communicated through that process. I think because an important part of it, this is kind of fit for students that they know what they're signing up for, and parents know what they're signing up for, and there's good, open, honest, clear communication around that. So that'll all be part of that, like, application process.
Okay. So it's only for people that would be interested that would have this information in a more thorough way, not for the general community?
So when, so this is not for next year. This is a planning year. And then when parents are interested in potentially applying for a life school with their children, there's an informational meeting. And that's when they find out the structure and the, the general tenor of what that program looks and feels like. So right now, this is in a real, this is, last year was a process to decide whether or not the life school staff wanted to move forward in this direction, which they all felt would be really beneficial for the program. So now it's that, that learning process where they, they figure out collectively, okay, what does this look like in action? And that is not over the course of next year. So there's no, like, the students who are in life school next year will be experiencing the same program that was in place this year. So this is like two years out. So maybe it would be helpful, too, I think, when the high school presents, if they could share what this looks like.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that would be helpful, and it would be better just because I think in general, it's, you know, it's something that our district offers. And I think the more people that have information about it, that they could even contemplate, like, I don't, you could contemplate in even going to the information session. But if you have no idea, and especially because of the changes, right, you don't know if it's going to be something that you're even interested in. So I think the more people who know about it and understand, I think it'll be beneficial to the district.
Yeah. So if I could just note, I just pulled up the decisions book. There are several pages on the life school that outlines every course and what students would expect. So that's published, you know, before students register. And I guess a student, I don't think we have many students that are in life school that choose not to continue in life school. But if a student did see that, as Dr. Ackerman said, next year, the shift won't be as significant as the following year when they shift to IB. So there'd be more, you know, more communications around that. But there are, you know, several pages of all the different subject areas, what courses are offered, math, science, English, social studies.
So we should expect the decision book to change in advance?
That's right.
For people to find out?
That's right.
How it's going to be adjusted.
Adam, there was also talk, I heard at some point, I don't remember where now, that maybe life school would be opened up to sophomores as well. Is that still in consideration for the coming years? Or is that not on the table right now?
That's not on the table right now. I think where conversations have, have been around is if we could offer some sort of nine, 10 program to kind of dovetail with 11 and 12. But I think that the collective, this wasn't just a life school exploration. This was a full faculty exploration because I'd be, can span well beyond life school. This is just where it's starting.
Okay.
And so I think that the focus was, let's look at implementing this 11 through 12th grade, and then talk about, is there other places that we should expand it? And so in addition to whether or not life school could fit in ninth and 10th grade, we've also talked about if TSP could fit in the middle school. But we're taking things at one step at a time.
And I know this year, this past school year, the life school offered AP courses. And then, but IB is obviously a different thing from AP. So for this coming year, it will be a similar program to what was there last year. And then the following year, it'll switch from AP to IB.
So next year, offering AP classes, part of this decision-making process will be, because there are some schools that offer IB and AP. So that'll be part of what they'll be discussing as they start to move in this direction.
Thanks.
I just, Christine, I guess this question is more for you than for Adam. Adam just said that generally speaking, every kid in the life school stays in the life school. So what exactly, I guess, is your thought process in decision-making and the genesis behind wanting to change it in any way?
Yeah. So the career, the IB component that they're looking at is career exploration, and it fits in nicely with the project-based learning model that is the foundation of life school education. And so they're looking for a way to kind of capitalize on, like, the latest research and what works well in the curriculum in that space. Because that originally was intended to be the project-based school where they would capitalize on different progressive curricular techniques and look to see if they could expand that to the main campus. So they've done that this year with advisory, and now advisory is moving to grades nine and 10 based off of the life school experience. So I think this is the next progression for that program. And I just want to, I don't know if we've talked about this collectively in a public session, but about two years ago, we were concerned about enrollment in life school. We've made some shifts, and we had more applicants this year than we had spaces available. So I think we're headed in the right direction with the new leadership there. And I think this is just another opportunity to reshape this program, to best prepare our students in that program for their, as they transition out into their next space, which is normally college.
Were there other questions for Dr. Ackerman before we move on?
No.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Okay.
We have reached the public comment period. We welcome public comments. And in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding comments presented. Any public comments? Hearing none.
Let's just speak more slowly.
Point taken. It's been a long day. Yes, point taken. Let's go to approvals and ratifications, then. Let's take 6.1 and 6.2. These are the minutes from June 20th and June 25th. Can I have a motion to accept both of these minutes?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wait, hold on one second, Christine. I do have a comment about that. Can I make a comment about that?
Yep.
Okay. So I just wanted to note that for both items, 6.1 and 6.2, to the minutes of June 20th and the minutes for June 25th special board meeting, that there was public action taken. And you'll see in the minutes that I did vote nay. I was the only board member that voted nay for that walk-on resolution. And I just wanted to make note of that because I didn't feel like, we didn't have the benefit of ample time to review and be thoughtful about the contract. And it's one of our most important jobs, and we just did not, we had less than 24 hours to review that. Legal counsel was not available for questions due to timing. And it was in a, not a regular board meeting, scheduled board meeting, but a special board meeting. And it was proposed as a walk-on resolution, which I also voted nay to have on there. I just think that the process could have been better. The timing wasn't great. And I was not happy that I didn't have proper time to be thoughtful about the most important job that we have as a board member. And that we didn't have access to our legal counsel to ask thoughtful questions and have a back-and-forth exchange and discussion. So I had to vote no for both of those resolutions. That was on the 6.2 agenda. And the 6.1, I mean, that was a regular board meeting. And so that is on record. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay.
I recommend 7.1 instructional as presented.
I'll move that we accept 7.1 as presented. Can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I recommend 7.2 non-instructional as presented.
I move that we accept second, 7.1 as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that the one that, Christine, is that the one with Ellen Doherty in it?
Not yet.
Not yet? Can you tell me when that's coming up?
Yeah, of course. We're up to the consent agenda now. So this is where you'll make your point, Kayla.
Okay.
So the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda as submitted by the superintendent. So as a preliminary matter, are there any items eight through one through 8.34 that any board member would like to consider separately?
Yes, 8.20.
Okay.
And then, do we need to move them out of the consent agenda if you just want a separate discussion on it?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about right now.
Okay. So then, 8.30 and 8.31 as well.
So it's 8.20, 8.30, 8.31.
Yes, yes.
And Lisa, remind me the procedure. Does that just do it?
We need to have a motion to second to remove them from the consent.
Okay. So are you going to move then, Kayla, to take those three out of the consent agenda?
Yes, sure. I move.
I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that passes. So we'll, we'll consider those three separately. So, right. So let's go back. We'll do all of the 8.1 through.
8.19.
8.19. And then we'll pick back up with 8.21 through 8.29, and 8.2, or 32, 33, and 34. So all of those all together, I will move that we approve those. Can I have a second?
A second.
Any more, well, we don't really do a discussion here, right?
Aye.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now we're going to go to 8.2 separately. Yeah, 8.20. My apologies. Thank you. Right, right. Okay. So I will move that we approve 8.20, which is an increase of $2,595.50 to the agreement for services with Ellen Doherty for the prior school year, which was previously approved by the board at its August 8, 2023 meeting. Can I have a second?
A second.
Okay. And now for discussion. Kayla, did you want to comment on?
Yes. Yes, Christine, thank you for that, that update, that slide on just kind of explaining to us what her work is in our district. And I just had a few questions, and I wanted to open it up also to others if they had questions. Is this something that is best practice for districts to do for their faculty?
So for their DEI faculty or for their administrative?
Anyone who is working with her.
Yeah. So I had shared, and I had done a little backup memo for you guys, where I shared some research about how executive coaching for principals translates to positive outcomes for leadership. And so there's a lot of different opportunities where you could engage with agencies that could provide this work for you. I know that when I had done this, I had a coach from the Mid-Hudson Leadership Academy. There's certain BOCs that provide executive coaching as well. I think Ellen's previous relationship as an employee here puts her at a different, in a different position to be able to help our leaders navigate Jaffa a little bit differently because she has a deeper understanding. In terms of DEI, since our positions are so new, and there aren't a lot of models out there for us to pull from, the board had felt that it was a necess, it would be an opportunity for us to support our debt, our staff in a way that they felt would be beneficial if they, if they believe they needed that level of support based on the work that they're doing. And I can tell you that, without getting into specifics, our DEI staff do take advantage of sessions with Ellen because their work is identity-based, and the need for support to do that work sometimes is significant. And so I feel like, you know, the resolutions that have been taken, was taken off and we're talking about right now is, we, we had more people access service than we anticipated, which is why we were a little bit over. And so that's why we're in this position because we can't, we're not going to pay a bill that's over what's been approved. And so I think that speaks to the value of services that she's provided because it's all optional for our staff. And I also shared with you in the, in my backup, how I've presented this last year for staff to be able to use her services. So.
Okay. So it is, it's optional. That she doesn't have any specific designated people that she has to work with? Because I actually, I don't see her contract in 8.20. I don't have it here.
So her contract, we actually approved it, is 8.29.
Okay.
The 8.20 is the overage for this year.
Okay.
So if you look at 8.29, you can see that. But if you look to the backup that I sent you, I shared with you the email.
Oh, okay. I wish, okay. I didn't, I didn't realize that. There are so many things on the agenda. Okay, I just want, I think the reason why I'm bringing this up and wanted to have a discussion about it is not because I don't want her to provide these really important services, but because of what happened this past year with the budget failing and people being very concerned about how we spend our money and to whom and what and where and how long these services are, and is it necessary, and what is priority and what is not. I just feel like we needed to just have a thoughtful discussion about it so that the community understands. And actually, for me, I don't know about the other board members, that I understand that this is something that is beneficial to our faculty and staff and that we want to do this and we believe in this. And I just need that to be clear. And this is where we want to put our money. And, you know, I know Ellen. And so it's, you know, it's not about her. It's really more about the position and what our needs are in our district and are we spending the money in the right places at this time. So that's my purpose of wanting to have a separate discussion and taking off the consent agenda. I guess it is sort of backwards that we approve 8.29, and I'm asking about the overage. I wish somebody would have noticed that and, and, and let me know. But that didn't happen. But so, in any case, it doesn't matter because really, it's really more about being able to have the discussion and understanding, a proper understanding of what the work is and why it's needed and necessary.
I would say that the way we spend money obviously reflects what we value, right? And so we've spent a lot of time over the past couple of years talking about mental health. And a lot of what we focused on has been our students' mental health, as it should be. But I think that it equally needs to be a priority to make sure that we have supports available for our faculty and administration and staff and their mental health, as well as our students. And if this supports our faculty and administration and their mental health in a way that they have found meaningful and useful, then I think it's a good use of funds, and I fully support that.
Okay. Yes. I mean, that's really what I, that's really what I want to hear. If that's really what the, you know, I.
Any other comments on this item?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we're going to move to 8.30. This is, again, I'll move this one, be resolved, the Board of Education hereby approves an amended proposal from Cuddy &amp; Federer LLP for legal services to the Chappaqua Central School District, supplementing proposals dated October 29th, 2021, November 12th, 2020, July 1st, 2019, and October 8th, 2019, previously approved by the board as presented at this meeting. Can I have a second? And then we can do discussion.
I second.
Okay, discussion about this one?
I guess I just wanted, I know, Josh, you sent a, I know, this was amended, right, Lisa, today? Was this the one that was amended? I just wanted to understand what the amendment was because I didn't have a chance to read it.
Yeah, I'll do it, because I did it. So if that's okay.
Yes, of course, yeah.
Okay, so there's two things going on here. We have, we have, we are not going to pay for any services for this project that the board has not approved. And so they were sending us invoices, and we didn't have a resolution or agreement in place for that. So this, and all these services were done. So this, there's two parts to this agreement. One is to pay for those services that have been done on behalf of the Board of Education in regards to litigation that is centered on the button hook property. And then there is like a looking-forward retainer agreement for potentially their involvement in supporting the continuation of that litigation over the course of the year, not to exceed $9,500. Just like on the agenda, if there, if you look at the end, there are the retainers that I'm able to sign because they're under $10,000.
Right.
I had them craft one agreement collectively for the board's action rather than having out two separate agreements because of the nature of why this is in place.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comment on this topic? Go ahead.
I asked because, again, like, if things start, I know that there has to be some last-minute changes and amendments to the agenda, and that that's how it's always been done, and it happens, right? But I think when we don't have ample time to look at it, because it's coming in when we're at a board retreat, and it's coming in, and it's not to anybody's fault, it's, I think, important that we do understand what the amendments were and what that looks like. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Onto 8.31, which is a budget transfer to cover special education release and settlement agreement for the 2023-24 school year, authorizes the board president to execute that document. So if I move that one, can I have a second?
A second.
Okay, and what's our discussion on that one?
I know you also gave an explanation for the transfers for this item, right? If you can just explain.
Sure, so there was a settlement agreement that was approved by the board on January 25th, 2024. This transfer is to move funds into the settlement agreement line so that we account for it in the correct place from, it was a special education agreement, so moving it from there to that line so that it's accounted for in the correct placement so that we can then pay that.
So is this similar to what we did the last meeting where there was different codes, and we had to do some negative, I forgot what the term was called?
Right, so there, so there, when we moved around, there were some negative salary codes. This is different. This is that when we pay settlement agreements, we pay it out of a specific, we have a budget line for that specifically. And that budget line, we don't really put too many funds in there, right? So we need to move funds from our special education lines into that line to appropriately account for that payment.
So is it, is that how it's normally done?
Yeah, so it's simply an accounting thing rather than...
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other comments on that topic? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. I think that concludes the consent agenda. Lisa, for number nine, do we need to take each of these separately?
You may take them all together if you wish.
Okay. What's, you would prefer not to?
Yeah, because I want to talk about 9.1.
Okay. We're going to acknowledge the following contracts approved by the superintendent per Board Policy 6085, purchasing and bidding. So we'll do them one at a time. 9.1, an agreement for services with Jane Shepherdson for the 24-25 school year. Can I have a second?
Second.
Kayla, was there a question you wanted to ask?
Yeah, I just wanted to understand the contract with Jane Shepherdson, who was a previous board member, and I know we had a contract with her last year, which I'm not understanding why we need the renewal this year, what the purposes of that is.
So the reason I signed the Communication and Public Relations Agreement is because Jane has, first of all, this is an hourly rate, so it's with a maximum associated with it. And Jane has been instrumental in drafting communications that ultimately have gone out by either myself or the board, and has, and has a layer of expertise as an attorney and a former board member that has been extremely helpful as we've navigated some really complicated issues. And so that's why I felt it was important that I have the ability to work with Jane as we move forward here and over the course of this school year, as needed.
So does that mean that she's privy to confidential information that the board is also, like, just like the Board of Education is? Or what information is she allowed to have and not have? And how do we know what, because you're having these conversations with her, and I don't really recall last year what type of work she did for us.
So if you look at the contract, it's outlined under the bullets, which I'll read to you, assist with strategies to promote district news activities and achievements, support the district in creating content across various platforms, including district websites, social media, direct email, direct mail, newsletters, e-newsletters, and the like, assist the district in formulating public relation plans and strategies, and potentially generate press releases and other, and other documents. When necessary, present strategic communications advice and public relations solutions in times of crisis. So that, that's her work.
Okay, so, but is that something that we need an extra person to do, like, specifically?
What I'm sharing with you is that last year, I used her services to help do that work on behalf of the district and the board to be able to push out communications in a timely manner. So if I didn't feel like I, we needed this level of support, I wouldn't have re-engaged in the contract.
Yeah, well, I also didn't think that we needed it last year, so I'm raising the same questions this year. So, but you're telling me you do.
Yes, my answer, my answer is yes.
Yes, I'm saying I don't, okay.
So for Lisa, do we approve these, or where does the...
You're acknowledging, you know, the superintendent.
Okay, so as, so a motion and a second, and then that's it?
Generally, vote to yea or nay.
Okay, we yea or nay, the acknowledgement of it?
Yeah.
Okay, so can I have those in favor of acknowledging this, say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. That acknowledgement carries. 9.2 is agreement for services with Jill, I'm not going to pronounce this right, Rogovic, for the 24-25 school year. I have a motion to acknowledge that.
Motion.
Any discussion of this one? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 9.3, an agreement for services with Learning Without Tears for the 24-25 school year. I'll move that one. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion of this one? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And 9.4, an agreement with Civ, Pege, and Riesel PC for the 24-25 school year. Can I have a motion for that one?
Second.
Any discussion of this one? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Nothing for facilities or financials. Lisa, remind me what we need to do with number 12.
You're just basically going to approve the annual acquisition of all the existing board offices.
Okay, so I will move that this, that we shall follow 12.1 and affirm all of the policies previously adopted by the board. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, notice of future meetings, we will gather next on Wednesday, August 7th, 2024, at 7 o'clock. Will we be in the auditorium as it stated, or will we be here?
It's up to you.
All right, well, I prefer to be here if we can, but...
All right, so we'll be in here.
That will be the tax warrant, and then Thursday, August 29th, 10:00 a.m., for opening day. Can I have a motion to adjourn at 8:02?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.